Stand with us and we'd like to begin with a prayer and then remain standing for the pledge, please. I'm going to call on County Engineer Lynn Ross to open us with prayer, please.
I'll just pray. Heavenly Father, again, this thankful day, thankful time to seize, Father, we can celebrate the birth of your son, Father, our Savior, our Redeemer, and praise his birth, Father, and his life, his death, and his resurrection, Father, for it means to Christians. Be with us today in this meeting, Father. Give us the knowledge to make decisions, possible for betterment of the county, and watch over some of it. We spend this holiday season, Father, in safe travels with our families. As holy saying, you hold them and pray, Father.
Amen. Do you want to send the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please be seated. We do have a quorum, so we can proceed. The first item on the agenda is scheduled public hearings, and this is related to four road closure petitions. Lynn, I'm going to ask you, if you will, to come up and give us explanation or description on these four areas, four sites, and then we'll move forward, see who's here to speak on those issues.
Well, I don't know what list I got these in, but we'll go through them one by one. The first road that we have is Toucan Road that I've got on the first printout you see right there, and this is on US 29 there off of Sims Road. This road was actually, it's kind of an odd one to kind of describe because the county has never maintained this road. This never was a county road, although it got named to be a county road. Now, one has it on record as being a public road, and it's not a public road. The road was bladed once by the county that we know of historically, I think back in the ninety flood, ninety, ninety-one flood, the main culvert at the canal there blew out, and nobody had a way to get in out of that little community right there, that little neighborhood there. So they bladed the road the one time, and how it got named the road, I don't know. But that's that one.
So we've received a petition on that to close it, but their other landowners affected, so.
Yes. Now, the landowners, the joint landowners, because it does go to Bill McLean, CXX Railroad, and Ms. Serena Garrett are the landowners. So that was the petition to get it closed. I want it off our records as well, because like I said, it's not a county road, so.
And none of them opposed to closing it, or they're all?
No. Like I said, the road is actually owned, CXX Railroad is the actual owner. It's where the road is actually located on.
We'll open for, in case there's somebody here for or against today, we'll have that conversation as we.
But the road is actually owned, CXX Railroad. It's where the road is located. But that's it. We sent notifications out for this, and everything, as far as I know, was good to go on that, so. And I did speak, Mr. Bill McLean did get ahold of me, and I spoke with him, just to make him again aware of the meeting today, because I met with him earlier about possibly putting a road in on the top side of his property. But he would just want to make double sure that, you know, he had an access way to get into his property, if this was, whatever were to be. Like I said, it's on CSX Railroad property, road use. So if they decide to close it, or they abandon it, the railroad becomes the joint landowner's property, something happens then, he will make sure he had a way to get in and out on that.
Y'all prefer to deal with each one, case by case, all right? This is Toucan Road. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Yes, ma'am.
So that road is technically my driveway.
Yeah.
It goes directly to my house. There is no way to access Bill McLean's from that road unless he's going to be on my ATV. He does have access for back on 29. I have spoken to DOT, and they will use my driveway from 29. All he has to do is call it. But it lands at my house, and I already paid to have gravel put in, because otherwise you wouldn't be able to park in my yard. So I've already spent over $5,000 on that road already, just to fix it.
But is it still yours? You've already got it from CXX, or no?
No. But there was no way you have, you couldn't drive down from the road.
Yeah, so I guess the concern would be if we abandon it as a public road, is it your intent to gate it?
I have discussed it with Powers South to gate it.
Although it's not your property?
They have an easement. They have an easement to there.
For access, but does that give you the right to gate it?
According to the railroad, since they have no line of access to or used it over ten years, it should go back to us. Powers South does have a strip on there where they have power lines, and they have agreed to put a gate up with them having a key and access if we decide to gate it. Our main issue is that we have people driving Rangers and Jeeps jumping the hill where the substance tank is. That's over a $10,000 substance tank.
On there, on your property?
Only, yes, on our property.
I agree with her on that.
And we've already had press trespass targets on a neighbor who decided to take the barn and make it his own and destroy the land and started burning trees off of it because in their thing, it's the county road, even though it goes to, it's my house.
Like I said, it is on CXX property. I mean, I understand what you're saying, there is, and Powers South does have an easement that runs to the property. And basically, the US 29 right away is forty foot from center line, and then there's a hundred-foot easement for, CXX owns that hundred-foot strip from the, that's offset from the state right of way right there. And then they actually have an additional, because that sets the center line of that power line easement on them, and they've got an additional fifty-foot easement onto Ms. Garrett's property for their right of way through there. Like I said again, but the road is technically on CXX Railroad, and yes, Powers South does have an easement that runs through there. It's a hundred feet wide, and it basically hits the.
Is there easement parallel to CSX property, or is it on the?
Yes, it basically hit there. The road is technically all on CXX. I've got the survey, and I did a air photograph to just to kind of see myself where it was hitting, but.
Well, I think my point would be, I have no problem with you using that as a drive. That would make sense, and that's what you've been doing. I also would be concerned about a neighboring landowner who is using that as a drive, regardless, I assume if they can get on through on a four-wheeler, then maybe that's the way they're accessing property.
We have cameras up in the last two years that we've been building. There has been, been a lane as long, shown up several weeks.
But what about next, what about next year, though? How does he access?
I have sent Tommy pictures of property to show that he cannot access it from us. Like I said, I discussed with DOT for him to have access. All he has to do is call DOT, and they will give him 29 access. But now, we've had to jump through hoops to get it going, because according to the county, it's a county road, okay? County water couldn't even give us a meter without us having to dig through the county road, because they wouldn't touch it, and they couldn't pay it from Sims because there's a cement creek. So we have water meter on 29 that has to go through the road itself that we all have to pay money for to get going. I mean, basically, if you look at pictures, it looks like a field. It's a drop.
Oh, yes, it's never been maintained by us.
I mean, it's never, it's never been maintained. It's never, the county doesn't pay any money towards it. They don't do anything for it. It's ours. It's been ours for over thirty years.
But has CXX given y'all anything in writing that they've given that to y'all? Have y'all got anything in writing?
The only thing I have, I have been owner, my sister has been owner for six years of two acres. I took ownership of the other acres after me and my dad. Only thing I have in the railroad is them asking for us to sign the property over, and I was like, I'll send that to you back when we started.
But if y'all signed, if they've signed it over?
No, it was never signed.
Yeah, we need to get that situated. If that's the case, then we could do something.
If that's the case, it's still belongs to us, because it was never signed over.
But I don't see, I don't think we can give right of way away yet, or the road. It's not really ours to use, because it never was a road, but I'm just saying as far as legal purposes, because I know the McLeans do use that to go in and out, if they ever did go in there. I just, if we do it as is, I just request that may even give a lock to them. That way you can keep all the other intruders out, and whatever, if he ever decides to go in there personally, I guess he could, we could make a arrangement where he could have a key to the gate, being he is a joint landowner.
What's the cost of a drive cut off of 29?
It's a deep cut right there where that railroad is.
Yes, it is.
It's a big, it's taller than this. It's probably twice these ceilings right here.
So what is the cost of that, Lynn?
It'd be probably $20,000 probably to build that drive, if not more.
And then I would request for y'all to maybe, they want on water meter to our property, which is.
That'd be, that'd be something the water authority there.
We don't do water. But we do control cuts in county roads, so I'm a little interested that y'all went and dug and put in a water line, because we wouldn't give, I don't know if we, if the water authority.
It's just a bad deal. This road got named a road, and I just, we wouldn't even be here today if it hadn't been called a road.
Abandoning a problem is what we're trying to do, but we also need to make sure to take care of anybody else.
We're just trying to take whatever says it's a county road off and let Ms. Garrett and Bill whoever.
Yes, because she had, I've met with her several times, and I agree with her. She had trouble getting even a mailbox put up, put up there, because I think you had maybe had a Toucan, was it a Toucan address?
It was a Toucan Road address.
So is this your, is this, is this the only frontage on your property? Is this road, you don't have frontage on Sims Road? So I find, so it was used as a road to get to your property, your sister's property, and Bill McLean's property. I mean, obviously, it's been an access point, whether he used it or didn't use it. It was an option for him.
It was.
But whether we claim it a county road, or we close it to say it's not a county road, none of that falls back on us.
Unless you plan to put a gate up, and then it affects the other landowners, and I just want, I'm just making sure that we're clear on how the other landowners get in and out, without having to go to the cost to go into court. Right now, they have, they have open access, just like she does. But then all of a sudden, you get into a court situation, or building a driveway off of 29 for $25,000 or whatever.
No, they would build it for, they would give them access, and I don't have that.
Giving access is different than building.
On the right of way, not on private property.
They're not going to build a driveway, I don't think. They may, but I don't think so.
The work is on, the work will be off, can it be off state right of way, they're not going to get off county right, state right of way to do that.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, they give them access on 229 up to the right of way, which is forty foot from center, but beyond that point, it'd be him, that's where the cost would occur, because I've looked at that cut, it's pretty extensive right there. It'd take probably a thousand, two thousand yards dirt to build a drive.
So I'm just trying to look at the map right here, so when you turn on, off of 29 on the Sims Road, it's the very first.
I have pictures of y'all.
To the right. Basically, is that the only?
I don't know, we were just talking about the same thing.
Ms. Garrett's got a house built.
Okay, back in here.
Back in there, yeah.
Okay, because it wasn't showing your house on this, it was just showing like when you turned in, there was a trailer right on the left.
Yes, sir, that's the mound.
So what is this?
That's the old trailer's banned.
So your residence is basically halfway down that road.
I just don't see why.
They just built a brand-new house right there.
Yeah, there's a new house built here. That's her mound, since we saw they were driving over, playing on it right there, right there.
She's been wanting it closed because of trespassers coming in there, getting to her property and tearing it up and jumping.
I'm still confused, Mama can't just say that, yes, close it if that's what she wants.
I agree. I mean, we can't just say county's done with it. Everything else.
That's what you want?
That's what I want, is for the county to be done with it. I mean, you're not taken care of, it's the main.
It never was a road. It never was a road.
We'll come back to that in a minute, as far as, I think we need to finish the public hearing, and then we'll come into business. Okay.
But I agree, it never was a county road, and like I said, Mr. McLean did call me and discuss concern about having, having access. He just wants access. He doesn't really care, but I don't think he wants to spend the money, twenty-something thousand dollars, if he can still use that road to access the property. I think if he were just to have a key to the gate, like I said, until we get the letter signed by CXX, I don't see why we can technically legally put a gate up on the property.
We're not going to be the ones putting the gate up.
No, that's what I mean, but I don't see how they can technically close off, put a gate up on somebody else's ownership until they actually take ownership of that property.
But that's not our concern.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not.
Who grants easements?
Powers South has an easement to that property.
Who does it?
Judge.
That's what I thought. You'd have to go, you have to have access to your property, so if you get an easement, you can still put your gate up or whatever, but whoever's in there would have to have access to their property. This way I always understood it now, but I didn't, for sure, who granted the easement, but I know once you got an easement, that easement can't be blocked without access.
You know, there's a line in there, it says access road here, such and such and all that. Sometimes it's not the deed. If it's not the deed, somebody needs access, and they have to upstairs, we're being bound to give them access. He's going to give them access, but it's going to be the best route.
But I mean, it's been aggravating for Ms. Garrett. I know what the troubles she's been going through.
I see that. Is anybody else here to speak on that, for or against, okay? What's the second property?
The second, second property on the one, I didn't, there are no particular order. The second one is Starflower Road. This is on 55 South, on five, near Five Runs Creek. The state highway department has been working on plans to replace that bridge, and they requested for us, because there's a new alignment for the road, and the way that alignment's coming into that new bridge, they're going to put it on the downstream side or the west side of 55. And the way this road's coming in with the new grade of the bridge, the ramping, and just the point of access to the bridge, with the closest to the bridge where it would come out, the state had concern about that. So they contacted our office, our engineer's office, and requested that we maybe see if we couldn't close that road off. And all I'm doing, I'm not really, I'm not, I'm not closing the road, I'm just closing the point of access to 55. It'll still be, it'll still be.
We've already talked about this.
Yes, it'll still be, it'll still be, this one will still be a county-maintained road.
It just going to come off of 32.
It's just it'll be a dead-end road now, instead of having full access to 55. We're just closing access off to 55, is all we're doing. It'll still be a maintained road. All we're doing is closing the access point.
And that's Starflower Road. Is anybody here to speak on Starflower Road, closing or not closing?
And there's just, and there's just two, two landowners. There's two landowners.
Y'all good with? All of you, okay.
As long as you're going to maintain.
Yeah, we're maintaining the road, yeah. We've done a lot of work. We brought a lot of rock, and we did some clearing and stuff on the road, so we're getting it and.
The letter said that you are considering closing, which is what really bothered me.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the point, and like I say, it's just.
Not maintaining.
Yeah, the beginning, and the beginning and the closure is really right there on 55. That's where, if you see on the map, that's, we're just closing the access point to 55 off.
All right.
And it's still going to be a county-maintained road, we're just getting it where you just can't access 55. And it's for more for safety precautions with the new bridge alignment and construction.
Any other questions or comments on that?
Okay, so they're going to close it at 55, and y'all going to maintain it?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we're going to still maintain it like we always have. We brought a lot of rock in, and we still got a little bit of work, and we're going to turn to, make a little spot at the end, because I mean, there's no school bus, I think, to use that road right now.
Yeah, school bus uses.
Oh, they do use, but they don't.
School bus speeds down.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think so, it's just for a cut-through for them, because there's no pickups on that road, so they could be safer actually going down to the main road and turning.
The school bus does it to keep from having to, you know.
To keep from having to go a mile.
They were going in and backing out and.
Yeah.
Going to the 55, so back north.
Well, like I said, we're still, we're still maintaining, we're going to still maintain the road. Like I said, it's just, it's just the point of access, just closing that point of access.
What's the length of that road, do you know?
I got it right here, Greg, go and see. It's right at a thousand feet, right at a thousand feet. Yeah, there's a little bar scale there.
Anybody else here to speak on that or raise questions? Okay, what's the other?
Now, the next one in the list is.
Perry Road is our next picture.
Which one?
Perry is next picture.
Yeah, Perry, yeah. I was contacted by the landowner. Nine One One does not show any records of this, and this is more or less a mapping and appraisal. It just shows an old road on the map. I've gone back and looked at historical pictures, and you can't even see, I've gone back to the forties, you don't even see a road on this, and it's just the one landowner, and it runs, this property runs from, it's right there, this property is located around the Florida line between Yellow River and our public dirt road, Walker Road, and it basically parallels just a few feet off the state line, and it shows it literally going to the river down there. But it's, the landowner owns all the property, and it's, Nine One One does not even show it, it's just on the mapping and appraisal, so it's shown as a public road, is what this is. It's strictly just a mapping.
It's been long abandoned.
Yes.
Really? Just go through the legal process, all right? Is anybody here to speak on that? Okay.
Have you spoke with the landowner?
Yes, ma'am.
And he's in agreement?
He's wanted petition to have it. He just wanted, wanted that cleared up on the mapping and appraisal side.
All right, what's the next one?
Next one is Jackson Road in town of Red Level. This road's located near the south community, just, just south of the south community. It parallels County Road 21 and Beasley Road, and it's just a little connector between both those roads, and this road is roughly about 300 feet long. It's just a short little section road, and the Nolans have requested the closure of this road and.
Single landowner?
Yeah. And it's just a little cut-through between two of the roads, and the road's basically, the Beasley Road is just the old, I guess it's probably the old 50.
Old 55.
Old 55, yeah. It's just been vacated, basically. I mean, it's still a road, but it's just a little connector point between, basically the extension of downtown Red Level and this road right here, so.
And that road just cuts through the Nolan property and have requested to close it, turn it back over to them.
And there's another public road just south of this. I mean, literally, just about 500 feet south, there's another cut-through.
Parallel, just like this one.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody here to speak on this road? Raise questions, comments? What was the name on the, was it Starflower Road, is that the?
155.
Yeah. That's one of 155.
That's 55, yeah, Starflower.
Yes. All right. Anybody else have a comment on these, on these road closure petitions? We will close the public hearing part and move right on in. If there's no opposition, we'll just go ahead and deal with these while Lynn has the microphone. So we'll move into the business session. So we have petitions on four roads. I think we probably can handle all of them in a single motion, is that appropriate to do, or we need to do it individually?
I'll make a motion when you proceed with the closures.
Okay. Are there, there's a motion in second, are there steps beyond this that are needed?
No, the notification, I mean, just that, your vote and then the closure and notification of the closure, so we can follow up with that.
All right, we have a motion in second. Any other questions or comments on it? All right, we'll vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, those are.
And we're getting more and more of these. We're getting more and more of these. I had a petition by two landowners on HT Wilson Road that I'll be bringing forward probably first of the year to, I got the petition in my office to maybe close a portion of that road, just a dead-end portion of that road. They're not closing the whole road, but just where it's lengthy, and they're just about halfway down, they want to close it to keep point of access out. They've just got a lot of people, a lot of drug use, what the guy was telling me, going down that road, and it's a problem. All these little roads, like Ms. Garrett's situation, if there's a public road, you can't keep them off of it, but I think it's something very similar to what she was going through as well. So just a lot of people going down a road just because it's a public road, so.
Thank you, Lynn.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is a public comment from elected appointed officials. Judge, do you have anything for us today? Mr. Patterson?
The only thing I have is that we, you know, in the tax season, and we appreciate everybody paying their taxes, and I'd like to also remember to say that if you're over 65 or disabled, to make sure you sign those exemptions.
Where do you sign for that exemption?
Sir?
In your office?
Yes, sir, or online, our website has that form, you can fill it out.
Okay, good. Sure, you have anything for now? Come back to you? Okay?
I'm on the agenda later.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, the consent agenda is next. The minutes of the November 14 meeting were emailed to you for review, and you've seen the accounts payable and payroll listing for the month of November. I'll ask if there are any corrections or changes that you noted, or would entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion in second, do you approve those? Anybody else have anything you noted? If not, we'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, those are approved. Under old business, we wanted to consider approval of amendment, Amendment 909 resolution, and we'd ask our attorney to review this along with the administrator, and I'll call on them to bring us up to date on that item at this time.
Okay, including your packet are two proposed resolutions that are legally.
I don't know if they made it to the resolution.
But they have been forwarded to us.
Okay, I'm sorry, then, that were, that were forwarded to you. They are created under the authority of Constitutional Amendment 909, under employee benefits and recognition. One is for a safety incentive program to support and promote workforce safety and to acknowledge that in your workforce, if certain metrics are met by your employees, you know, accidents, those types of things. And the second is to have an employee appreciation program where plaques or certificates may be given for people who meet anniversary milestones, and to also honor your employees with a luncheon. And so if you were to adopt those resolutions, then those programs would be available to you. They are to be considered on an annual basis, if for any reason funding was not appropriate or available, you have the annual option to either put a pause on the program or to continue it each year.
All right. Commissioner, she, she mentioned those were forwarded to you by email. I know you had a chance to review those. We had some discussion at our last meeting. Any other questions for the attorney or the administrator on those two resolutions?
Well, I suppose we carry that, does include a safety incentive, includes full and part-time.
It does, yes.
Okay. If there's nothing else, there's, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the resolutions, if you choose to do that.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in second to adopt the two resolutions referenced related to Amendment 909. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those resolutions are adopted.
Thank you all.
Yeah. And thank you all for your work on that. It's a lot easier to say it here than it was to get it on paper way. It's pretty extensive. The next, uh, under, moving on to, on to new businesses, consider out of state travel for some deputy training. Page twenty-nine and thirty have pertinent data, information. Commissioners, uh, call on the administrator or the sheriff. Sheriff, come on up to the microphone. I'm sure we'll have a question or a comment or anything you want to share with us related to this issue.
Okay, this is just some out of state training that the officers have been going to, uh, to better our department.
Okay.
And, uh, offer, uh, you know, better, better training for our officers as well as, uh, better options for our community.
What is the trainer, actual chair?
Which, uh, which one is it?
It's the one in Pensacola.
The one in Pensacola?
That's, uh, the Strategic Law Enforcement Interview Course.
Right, it's, it's, it's an interview course down in Pensacola.
Is it for investigators or deputies?
Investigators.
Are these two guys new?
I don't even know their names.
Oh.
Eric Bradley.
Philip Baird.
Yes, they've been here a while, and it is, this is for the deputies or investigators, sending to deputies.
Oh, these are deputies, not investigators?
Right.
Will this, uh, go towards their continuing education credits?
Yes, ma'am.
And how many do they have to have a year?
Uh, they're required to have sixteen a year.
So one travel is to Pensacola, where's the other one? Do you remember?
They're both in Pensacola.
Oh, okay.
They're carpool.
Okay. Any other questions on this, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Your motion?
A second.
To approve and a second to approve the travel? If there are no other questions, we'll vote all in favor, say aye? Opposed, same sign? Alright, those are approved.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is consider purchase of new software for records management. This is your office as well, I think.
That's right.
Anything you want to share with us on that?
Uh, we, uh, we had some questions about the bid process, and, uh, I believe we have answered those questions. We currently have two software companies we've been looking at. We've picked one that, uh, that would be best for us, uh, and that is with Southern Software. Uh, we're just, right now, we're in the trials, just trying to figure out where we want Southern Software or Central Square. Central Square currently is not NIBR certified, and that's a requirement that we have. However, they've reached out to us and told us that they would be NIBR certified by the beginning of January. Uh, before this ever starts, they reached out to us this morning, or I didn't know that yesterday, we were discussing this. Uh, they reached out to us this morning, uh, so we're still looking at which one to go with, which one's best.
So which one interacts, uh, best with Nine One One and other local agencies?
Right now, Nine One One is with Central Square. Okay? OP and Andalusia are with Southern Software. Uh, well, we worked through Nine One One, so it would, it would make sense to go with Central Square. However, Nine One One is considering going to Central Square, I mean, uh, Southern Software as well. So I would like to see all of us on the same page so we can share information and cut down some of the call times. Right now, if, uh, if E nine one one gets a call and it's in Andalusia, that to hang up the phone, call Andalusia, and the process takes a certain amount of time. If they were to go to Southern Software, which I feel like they will, but I can't guarantee that, uh, then they can just send the call to Andalusia, and it, everything is, would be... We would like to know everything that's going on in the county, whether it's in the cities or the county, so we can be there to back them up. That's what we're trying to get to.
Is there a significant difference in cost between the two companies?
Uh, there is a difference in cost. I was, I just received a, another, uh, bid, I say bid.
Proposal?
Proposal from Central Square. Uh, the cost is very close on, on the front end, however, uh, there's a yearly maintenance charge, and it's double what Central, uh, Central Square is double what Southern Software is. But all of it's within the confines of what we, we, we actually put toward our records management system. We, we want to go with what's best for the, what's best for the department.
Now, we asked the attorney, I think, to review the, was it these proposals that you reviewed?
Um, there was one that I reviewed, um, we need to make one change to the term of the contract, if that ends up being the direction you want to go, um, but it sounds like maybe there's going to be another proposal. I'll be happy to take a look at that, um, and, and make sure that it's also compliant. Um, either one, because of the software element, um, you, the, the bidding component is, is, is handled. Um, so you would be able to either, you know, approve the purchase, you know, we can give you the information of the proposals.
We basically just need to be able to approve a purchase for either one of them. It does not have to be a, a bid type thing.
Karen, any, any questions that you have from your end that we need to consider?
To make sure it does not exceed the amount that was allotted in the budget.
Yes. And we, we don't want to exceed that either.
So we, are we, would it be okay to move forward with an unknown, an either or, uh, and give approval under?
One's got to, you can say one's got to get certified in something prior to.
Right.
So which one is not?
Well, the, Central Square is the one that is not NIBR certified. They have recently received, uh, a statement from the state of what they have to do to become NIBR certified. And they're saying they will be ready by January the first. Uh, we can't, we can't get it done before January the first. And, uh, and, and if it's not in place, uh, if they don't have NIBRs in place, then we're not going to use it because we have to report to NIBRs, it's a requirement. If they were to put it in writing that they would be done by a, a certain time, and it would be prior to us, to our startup, I'm okay with that, but they'd have to put it in writing and offer us a, a way, if it's not done, then we pull and, and go with another.
You was talking about the city of Andalusia, and all of them are on what now?
They're on, they're on Southern Software.
Which is the NIBR certified or not?
They are NIBR certified.
And you said they're cheaper too?
Yes.
What was the total cost, do you recall?
I don't have it in front of me, Miss Lynn.
I just saw all of it on an email, I guess it was, we got, where it was saying this was this, and I just didn't know, gotta put it together.
They're, they're both around eighty thousand dollars for the first year. Uh, Southern Software is about eleven thousand dollars per year after that, whereas, uh, Central Square is around twenty-two thousand dollars per year. Southern Software, uh, we would, we would have to maintain our own hardware. With, with, uh, Central Square, they maintain the hardware. So it's kind of a tit for tat. We just want to make sure we do the right thing. Right now, all of our, uh, all of our computers that are in the patrol cars and everything, they have, uh, Central Square's desktop. But there's certain buttons that we need to use that are not activated.
So if, if, say, we went with the Southern Software, do we have to buy a new?
That's, that's, that's all within...
They, they include that in the...
Right, that's put, that's put, that's training, that's everything.
So, I think there's probably, there's a consensus to move forward, I'm not sure how to move right now, since we have an unknown about the second company. And which one, obviously, it makes sense to me if you go to something that's going to interface with Nine One One, Andalusia, and OP.
Right, and, and I'll, I'll tell you, I, I would like to be able to purchase this when everything is worked out. I need to know what E nine one one is going to do. That's, that's what I need to know.
We may want to wait to see what the, the decision that board is until we...
Yeah, they, they...
Because I hate to buy some of them not swap over, and then all of a sudden, we're got...
Right, they, they meet, uh, they meet in a couple of weeks, and, uh, and we should be able to know something by then.
You, let's just, can we, can I make a motion to table until, until January to see what the Nine One One Board decides they're going to do?
Absolutely, I, I think...
We don't, we don't have a motion, and so we don't have to table it. We'll just, by consensus, we'll agree to put it under Old Business at the next meeting for consideration. And we'll have our answers by then.
This has kind of been an issue from time to time.
That's right.
One, some, some couldn't read what the other one was doing, it couldn't, it wouldn't interchange.
Right. We want to just move it...
It's been like that, so maybe we can work that out.
Okay. Good deal, yeah, sounds like we're all in agreement on that. So let's move to item C, consider request to purchase extra storage for equipment. And I think it's related to a four wheeler or something.
Right, we, we have a Bearcat, uh, and it's, uh, we don't have a lot of money invested in it, but it's a, it would be a huge expense to have to replace it, and we want to take care of it. I would like to, out of discretionary funds, I would like to purchase a portable carport that this thing can be parked under. I just need a place to put it. And, uh, I would ask that y'all will allow me to put it next to the jail in that, in that lot. If something had to be, had to be moved, it would be very easy to move. It's not going to be, uh, you know, no concrete and stuff like that, it'd just be mounted to the ground.
Okay, so is there a motion to... Move forward with this?
Bearcat. It's an armored vehicle.
Killer machine.
I would prefer that you didn't put it there. I know it's going to be difficult to find a place, but my reasoning being if that we ever add it on to the jail, I would think that would be the direction. I know that's not what's in the plan now, but who knows in the future? That's my opinion, but I know you are limited as to where you can put things.
Well, we are limited on where we could put it. I didn't want to put it in a parking lot because the parking lot would take up some of our parking around here, and it can be tight. And that's why I mentioned of having a awning, a portable awning, that if we were to add on to the jail, it, it's, it's really nothing to take it up.
So it can be secured into the ground?
Yeah, with like, with like trailer, you know, mo- mobile home straps that screw into the ground to keep the wind from blowing it away, that's all.
Alright.
Sheriff, do you, I mean, how, how base the, the portable carport, I mean, how, I think you can talk about?
Uh, it's, it's more height than it is width. Uh, the thing has a turret on top of it, uh, but I would like to be able to park the Bearcat under it and maybe a boat. So we have, we have a small boat that, uh, is over at the jail under an awning and free up that space, so...
So probably a twenty by twenty, something like that? Twenty-four by twenty?
Maybe twenty-four by twenty, um...
We may have something level on our side, just across the fence next to the jail, with the gates open to the back, to Kevin's, uh, maintenance shop and all down there on the, right there behind, right behind the parking lot there behind the sheriff's office, possibly. We could look and put it there.
I just have to be able to access it quickly, that, that, that's all. Um, because with the instant response team, it may not be a, it'll be someone in the innocent response team that actually accesses it, so...
Commissioners, what are your, what are your wishes? Well, they've named, mentioned a couple of places, and I understand it's going to be easy to move if that, if that becomes necessary at either place, so...
And I'm, and I have, I'm going to move, we got a couple of covered trailers out here. I'm going to move them to the back, they don't have to be under anything, and get them moved.
Okay.
So all, all that you should see out there is, uh, an awning with a Bearcat under it, and we probably will keep our, uh, trash crew pickup van and trailer out there.
Alright.
Did you mention a price?
No, I haven't even checked in the price yet. I'm going to be purchasing out of discretionary funds, it'll be, it'll be under the threshold.
I, I don't have a problem with it, as long as you find, like you said, somewhere where it's not going to be an eyesore, wherever, you know, it doesn't need to be behind a lock gate.
The, it don't have to be behind a lock gate, that thing's locked up so tight you're not going to get in it anyway. Uh, we've welded certain locks on, on it that, uh, it's locked up pretty tight.
Where do we get that?
Uh, I purchased it from Lenco through GovDeals. Uh, I used money from the Humvee sales to purchase it, so we're, we're actually, the Humvees were free. So we was able to run, make a little over thirty thousand dollars selling those, and I used part of that money to buy this Lenco and to get it fixed up. So we have about, about eighteen thousand dollars in fixing the Lenco up. Purchase it, transport and everything, so we did pretty good on that.
And what's the purpose of it?
It's to keep our, you know, we have an instant response team, and, uh, there's times that they have to go into a hot situation, and I don't want them shot. Uh, also with our schools, if we had to make some type of, uh, uh, emergency, uh, if we, if we were in the need of getting some people out of a place and pull a vehicle up there, then we can. We've got it fixed where the doors will lock open to use the shields. Uh, we're also, I haven't put these on there yet, but we are, there'll be some plates that flop down under the vehicle to stop any rounds from coming under the vehicle as well. So, it's some pretty heavy duty stuff. It's on a Ford, uh, F five fifty chassis. It's, I hope we never have to use it, I, I, I straight up don't ever want to use this thing for, for that kind of situation, but we're ready.
How old is it?
It's a two thousand six. A new one costs around two fifty, two seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, this one, of course, is not U-Bus, it's only got like fifty-something thousand miles on it. Uh, so it's, it's still serviceable, runs good. When we got it, we did, when we bought it, it was a little bit of a pig in a poke, uh, but when we, we got it, we checked everything out. It's got new brakes, uh, uh, the motor's in excellent shape. It's already had that, uh, bulletproof, uh, done to it where the studs are bad about stretching on these six litters. So that's already been done, good transmission, air conditioning works well, so it's a good truck.
Okay, so the question is, uh, providing, giving our permission for them to, uh, place a carport uh, on jail property or other county property that works?
As long as you get it where it ain't an eyesore.
Is that a motion? With that, with that caveat?
Yes.
And I'll second it, as long as it's not on this front lot unless that's the absolutely only place we can find it. I just don't like the clutter. That's just the woman in me. It is.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't like the clutter that, we've already got a lot, and I just think we need to maintain the front side of this place as best we can.
So I've heard a motion and a second with a, several caveats. It's up to you to carry out the, the... Be careful, be careful. Alright, any other questions, comments? I think we have enough to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? I think carried one to nothing, Sheriff. No, it carried, was the unanimous vote. Uh, next item is on Sheriff's Patrol Vehicle Bid, page thirty-one. Commissioners, you have a recap of bids, and I'll ask, uh, Sheriff, tell us what you want to tell us relative to this, and I'll ask Karen to...
We have, uh, we had, we had put the bids out to at least three people, three groups. Uh, the only one that can deliver in the amount of time we needed is going to be, uh, Step One. Uh, and it would be a Dodge Durango Patrol Vehicle.
Let me back up off that. Um, the bid specs specified that the vehicle had to be, meet certain criteria, and one of such is V-eight, and it's got different guidelines on that. Um, it also required that anyone returning the bid had to be able to, to have the vehicle ready within ten days or something, it was a certain amount of time. The bid specs we returned was, that was returned, the one that was the lowest bid was a V-six, so it did not meet bid specs. So that one is disqualified for that reason. So that leads into the one, um, that would be the lowest, would be Step One after that.
So the recommendation is to, uh, approve the purchase for forty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars of one vehicle from Step One?
Is this a new vehicle?
For two vehicles.
It's two vehicles.
It's two vehicles, that, that price each, I'm sorry.
Yes, at that price.
And they're going to come, that, that, you have to put more stuff on.
We're glad to put the equipment in.
Is that new?
Brand new.
Brand new?
Pursuit, pursuit rated vehicles. It's pursuit rated vehicles, it was part of the bid spec.
And you feel good about the Dodge?
I do. We have, there's several, there's several departments around, not here in Covington County, but, uh, Granville uh, has been using the Durangos, and they've had a good service out of them. Uh, I have no reason to believe that they wouldn't give us any...
And what, will these be used for patrol or?
Patrol, patrol.
I know I saw on our, uh, other sheet where we got a new something. Fifty-eight thousand, was that a patrol vehicle as well?
No, that was a vehicle for me.
Okay.
Uh, what it was is I had bought a, uh, police interceptor truck out of, out of my funds. Uh, we needed, we need to have these police interceptor trucks on the road, and we can't, we couldn't get one. So I put mine on the road and purchased another one for, something for me to drive. And then, and that was the only thing available, was that truck. So they're still getting three, three vehicles on the road.
The, the equipment you're putting in there, is that something you already have, or is that something that had to be purchased later?
Uh, some, we've got, what, some of it will be, we already have, uh, some of it will require a purchase, uh, you know, a cage, uh...
Because I know one time me and you said something, we was talking just in general one day, and you said something about trying to get a universal setup. That way, next time... Cause I know one time me and you said something, we was talking just in general one day and you said something about trying to get a universal setup. That way next time.
That's right. That's what we're going to do. Uh, the cages are more vehicle specific. However, the consoles, uh, a universal console that fits our equipment in it, that's, that's what I'm going to do. These consoles that we're, that we have purchased in the past that only fits a Chevrolet Tahoe, when the, when the Tahoe's wore out. I have no need for this unless, and even, and even then it's per model of Tahoe. So they make a, uh, they, they make a console that's pretty much just kind of a rectangle and fit about anything.
And these were budgeted in our budget?
Yes.
The vehicle that Commissioner Holmes asked about, is it not a pursuit vehicle?
It's not.
Why, why is it not?
Cause I, 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 what I did, my vehicle was a pursuit vehicle.
Right.
Okay, with low mass, it's like new. I put it on the road so they could use it for pursuit and I just had to have something else to replace it.
I didn't know why you don't need a pursuit, you don't?
I, our under, our plain marked cars are not pursuit rated. Uh, reason being is, is hard to come up with pursuit rated vehicles. They are, so we buy them off.
Pursuit rated, do they still want to get in pursuit?
Well, yes, if they need to, yes. A pursuit rated vehicle is, uh, it would be something that, that, that stays on patrol all the time. So it has to have bigger radi- radi- radiators in it and stuff like that. But they're pretty much the same, just, just a few differences.
Okay, did we ever get a listing of all the vehicles, you know, we had, I, I think Greg had asked for that several meetings ago? Of all the vehicles that the county had now?
We had the list that um Alan had provided and I think. Did y'all not get a copy of that yet? Okay, we can get a copy of that.
No.
Any other questions?
I think y'all were wanting like mileage and everything on them or something.
Just to have some idea of where we are.
I think he finished that. I know I got one that had, they were doing tags, but um. I need to follow up and see if he actually did turn in the one with mileage and everything.
Everything on it, but ricks and everything, just to have an idea of what's still out there.
Yeah.
I make a motion.
Approve the purchase. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Uh, we've asked a number of questions. Any more comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, that carried five to nothing. I heard the sheriff vote, so.
I think that was the last one for me, yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Uh, next item is consider approval or adoption of new county seals. Page thirty-two and thirty-three have pictures for us. Encourage you to look at those and I'll ask Ms. Karen to update us on what, what the proposal is.
Okay, page thirty-three is the proposed new seal for the county commission. It's basically was on page thirty-two with a little addition of the year that the county was established. Um, we think that's something to be proud of and would like to have it on there. Um, the emblem for the road department, we've asked for a little bit of changes to that. The part that's been highlighted in, we've asked that to be shaded back, so it. Appears to be more of a county road um versus the one that was put on there. The center's column, the very bottom emblem, I think is the one that I would recommend. I think it just has a little better flair for our, uh, for the arena. And then the, the third column is for the Pointe Park and we have asked for a modification as far as adding Alabama so that people that are coming through. Um, that it actually pinpoints this is Covington County, Alabama.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second? Which one did you say on the middle column?
The bottom.
The bottom.
What are these used for?
Uh, well, their logos are on the site, or the emblems are on the door of the vehicles, they're on your business cards, any um. Correspondence that we have on letterhead, they're used to recognize us and different foundations whenever we are a partner with someone.
That would be the.
Also. There's, uh, there is some groups that put our, our image on the saddle from High School Rodeo, Little Bridges Rodeo, they put our emblem on that. So it's just a wide variety.
Okay. I, I felt like that was the reason for the commission one or the county one, but I didn't know what the rodeo and Pointe Park was for. Like where did you, you just put them on a sign or something? It didn't matter. I just didn't know what they were used for.
Well, hopefully you'll see them out a lot.
Hope so.
Now that we have some, hope so.
It looks like on the commission one that District Three has somehow encroached on some of our.
Oh, it hasn't. It hasn't. Uh-uh. No, it's for real.
Okay. So I did hear a motion to approve, to adopt these as proposed. Am I hearing a second?
Second.
No, there is no further discussion or questions. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, that's approved. Thank y'all. It's been a long time coming. Uh, next is consider funding of joint project with City of Andalusia for sealing and striping at Kiwanis and Arena Buildings. Lynn, you may want to come up. I don't, uh, there may be other things you, it's about the point you would give us an update on your stuff. Uh. Michael, you want to move on there?
Yes, sir. Uh, me and Greg got invited out to the. Arena Kiwanis building the other day with the city and some of the Kiwanis discussed different things. Um, this is something that the city and I guess had been brought up before. And it was kind of a talking amongst everyone out there. I think uh. It's something that will benefit everyone in the long run. I think it's something that we can look forward to, maybe that we can join forces with. The city and the Kiwanis and some other things later on down the road. Um, I know the price was what, what did it show Greg, eighty something thousand, but our portion is not that.
Our, our portion is half, they're proposing that we pay half, the city pay half, so eighty-five, five divided by two.
And the city, the city has, you know, some different plans out there, wanting to talk about different stuff in the future and I think, you know, this may be something that. That can help proceed with different ideas.
I think, what's, what's your perception of the, of the need on the ceiling or with that point on that parking as far as you know? And I know Kevin has kind of.
Guess I should probably pass due, I would say.
Kevin had done, uh, had caused some sealing to be done on the USDA office parking already last year, the last two years. And uh, so this would, this would be the next, kind of the next step and, and this is just knocking it all out in a single step, so.
And I, I called a, a local contractor, other than the one that got, gave the quote, to try to check and see if it was reasonable. And the guy gave me just a square foot cost without even looking at it, just gave me a square foot cost and a length per line on the striping. And it came within four hundred dollars with that, within that eighty-five thousand dollars. So the guy's dead on the money as far as competitive bid. I mean, he's. He's, it's, it's very comparable to what other contractors would charge to do the work, so.
And so I think the requirement is, is, is uh to get quotes and uh. So we, the recommendation is to, uh, for us to share the cost of this with City of Andalusia.
I have a question.
The city, okay, the city made that proposal. Yes, ma'am.
Um. I noticed this paving project last night on the forms we got that, I call it paving. I know that's not what it is. Uh, but when I say it, just know I'm, I know what I'm, okay, as long as I call it paving. Uh, was submitted back in September. Matter of fact, I think it said on the twentieth, so it's been an ongoing project for a while, I'm assuming.
I don't know the, I don't know if the City of Andalusia or Kiwanis, I don't know who even initiated it, yeah.
You know, last, I think that was Monday, y'all had your meeting. Wasn't that right? Yeah, we were not aware of it, or I was not. Uh, so this was all news to us, or several of us. Um, and I find that strange, but anyway, with that being said, do we know how much is actually county property that's going to be paved? Versus city and Kiwanis?
I've got that. I don't have that in the front of my mind, but I've got, I've got, got it written down.
Okay, and it's what, we're gonna guess forty percent maybe? I think someone told me that.
It's about, I, I, it's forty to fifty percent. It's, it's almost up and down, pretty much, pretty even.
All right, so the, then the remainder would be Kiwanis and city. So they would split the fifty-fifty, okay.
I can get you that number. I can get you that number.
Okay, when this is completed. And not going into any other issues we've had. Um, but are we going to have use of the parking area?
Yes, I, I would say.
That has been, but we know that we are. This is not gonna be, we might have it or we'll wait and see if we're gonna have it and who gets upset about what. Okay, uh. I just truthfully think, and I know I always look like I'm the bad guy, I do think this is a good price from what, just what you've said and from what I've been told. Uh, I know previously that Kevin has always tried to do this in segments. So that it didn't cost the county all at one time, but I still think it's a good price. I think it's probably needed and it will make the place look better. So I'm all for all that. My concern, and I did speak with a Kiwanis member, my concern is until all the other issues are settled. I'm not sure that we're going to be doing the best for the county. I would like for Morgan to be able to intercede. And just make sure that we have that understanding and then I'll be for it. But I think it's a great opportunity, especially for all three entities to finally come together.
And I, and I will say, I think the city kind of initiated this to try to help.
To do that. And I, I agree. I'm, I'm all in, but I'm just concerned over.
Because I know, like I said, there's some things said, like I said, like I just, you know, mentioned it, there, there's election coming up and the city just said, hey. Let's go here and then after the election coming in the next, you know, March, then we'll have more discussion later on. But I think the city's really wanting to.
They want to advance that property as a whole and see it have a greater impact, I think, so. And there wa, I think the city expressed an interest in making it, uh, their investment in it. The, the operation, the, the understanding, and I know there've been some concerns recently, but the understanding for twenty, twenty-five years is that. Those parking lots are shared depending on the need of the moment. If you go out there on a softball night. Uh, that, that event may use all of what we might call the uh Andalusia parking plus all of the Kiwanis parking. On a rodeo night, our event may lead to parking in, around the arena and over in the Kiwanis property. And I've seen like the Chamber Bank with their people parked all the way across all three. So it's just common use. It was all jointly, the, the costs were shared when the original paving was done. When it was expanded between the, and added the parking in, around the ball fields, which was a later development in the, in our, our facility. There were shared costs. Uh, anyway, I, I hear what you're saying. I think that that's an appropriate concern. I think we all have it, but I do think it's a. Uh, that we can move forward assuming that everybody's not be sharing it like we have in the past.
Karen, do you have anything to say?
No, I, I do think it's needed and I think it would increase the uh, the looks overall of the complete complex. Um, it, it is hard whenever we have horse trailers and people coming in from out of state. And they go up a drive and have to turn around and go back down to go out and go right down the road to go to another drive. So that, that would be a, a good concern, you know, big concern of mine. Is to make sure everybody feels welcome because if you have those dividers in, it just makes everyone feel unwelcome on the complex.
And I know we had to go up and build an extra row just to get some in and out here of our back.
We, we did.
The uh.
I just, I just want the issue settled. That's all I'm asking more.
Lynn, the sealing on that, on that asphalt, what's the purpose? Is that a life, is that related to the life of the asphalt or do you have to come in?
Just to help seal some of the cracks, keep water from getting in it, having base failures.
So it does affect the life, the wearing life of that product? And then the striping, of course, is just for safety in parking, you get more efficient parking and so.
If you could afford it, they recommend sealing it every two to three years.
Yeah.
We've never been able to afford really to do that. Um, I think we've been ordered to like, you know, six to eight years we're sealed. And we have had issues um recently at the courthouse and I had it sealed. We had to patch some spots and that's exactly all it is. Big garbage trucks come in and turn, big trucks come in and turn. That's worse than, than a recreational, you know, car, truck vehicle. And, and it, it causes problems.
So in the cycle that we've been on, it's time to do our, our part of this for sure.
It very much is time to do the, around the arena, yes.
And mobilization for this, if you do it all at once, obviously you'll have a reduced cost in mobilization. You do it one time and it's all done, so. All right. What about patching? Anything that needs patching?
Everything's good out there. I mean, everybody, one or two isolated spots, but I, I think everything's in a good shape out there.
I talked to the guy that's gonna do it. He typically does it if it's a bad hole, he'll patch it.
Okay.
Typically that he does that. If it's just real bad, he will tell you on the forefront it's gonna be extra, but if it's a small pothole, small pothole, you know. He passes it with some patcher boards in.
Okay. This is, it happens to be the same contractor that you used last project you had, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. What are your wishes, Commissioner?
I make a motion with joint, like with the city, sure. Us joining forces with another project, you know, really hopefully, I think it could, it could potentially be a big help later down the road for us.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
If I have questions on it beyond what you've already had answered.
Are we gonna stay with a verbal agreement on the usage? Uh, you said that they agreed that there would not be any problems.
Well, you could look at giving something, you know, writing up it for whatever I mean. If they won't, you know, say that if we have overflow, we can use theirs and.
I know, I know there's, there's an effort underway to, to come to terms on what the commitments and agreements are and that.
That is part of these, to be part of it.
Yeah, it does.
When all is said and done and settled.
Yeah. I think it's a gesture on this, try to solve problems.
Yeah.
To agree upon. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything else? All right, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay. Passes three, one, all right. Uh, move to. The floodplain, what's referred to as the floodplain development ordinance. Do you want to touch on that, the history of it or what you presently do? Just give us a, a one minute overview. And I don't think we're ready, Commissioner Stack, on this yet. Uh, we've asked the attorney to work closely with Lynn on this. We'll make sure we're not stepping into. A greater problem or a burden than we can maintain, so.
Well, it's, uh, all this kind of comes through ADECA. Um, and we adopted these regulations to take part of the National Flood Insurance Program. And there's certain, I've, I've been audited here over it um years ago by ADECA, probably six, five, six years ago. Back when I first took over, that's the county engineer that came and ordered this. And uh, um. The only issue that I see, and I, and Morgan's read into more, I guess it's a two-hundred page document. Um, I think it's about two-hundred pages. It's pretty, pretty lengthy. Um, but um. The only issue I already have with a lot of this stuff in the county, the only flood information we have on record that I can actually write a community letter on. For insurance, for mortgage companies and things of this nature. Cause they, I get a lot, I write a lot of mortgage letters to, to insurance companies. Um, to help them out as far as getting flood insurance. And then being the floodplain manager, I have to write and say, all right, this is in a flood zone A. Elevation is, is X, building is, is at elevation Y. And uh, they base their flood insurance off what I, what we come up with. I don't actually do the, the work. I, I, I. Um, surveyors do it.
You provide, you provided a database that the.
The only database we have is by the, um, asked by AEC, the old power, what is now Power South.
Okay.
Um, that did an inundation study years ago on the flood, on, on the flood, um, of the Gant and Pointe dams. Um, they have a mile post set up from basically the, the county line all the way up through Gant. I think basically the whole county. And I got a floodplain profile. It shows my hundred foot, hundred year flood elevation through all stages of the, of the lake, so. With, as long as I got a mile post, and it's based off our, our, what we call our NAD eighty-three datum. It's a survey, it's what we use for our, our survey datum, for the count of the vertical, the datum. And uh, um, based off that, I could pick a mile post. I, if there's, if the creek is, or the river's meandering. I got a mile post, I can pick the house, draw a line, perp nickel to the lake, uh, lake run. I can get a mile post, exact mile post. I can correlate. I got a profile made that I can pick on that mile post. It gives me the elevation, what the hundred year flood elevation is.
Okay.
They give me the house elevation or a new home. And it's, it's hard. You know, we try, again, I, I'm gonna back up just a minute. We try to get up, we passed, we try to pass a building permit process years ago. Just to track. The building in the county, so I could kind of keep up more to date. Cause if, if I, if we don't have my go-to sell mortgage company, they can build in the flood zone and I may not even know about it. There's no way for me to police that.
Right.
So, um, and I think what Morgan's reading to it more than I have and from my understanding from her, they're, they're wanting us to kind of have a permit process in place and we don't have one. So um, that's, that's an issue that. So that's, that's an issue that we're going to have to kind of work through.
You, you, as the floodplain manager, and it goes to ADECA, but beyond that, it goes to FEMA.
Yes.
Do you, you don't issue a permit if somebody's attempting to get flood insurance? You issue a permit that commits that they're building at a certain elevation?
Yeah, they got, they got to build to a certain elevation. A surveyor, a surveyor calls the, or say a homeowner calls, and we used to have signs up, the signs aren't much, it says you're entering a flood zone area. But let's not have a permit process, it's, we try to fishnet everyone we can, it's hard.
So it's on the, it's incumbent upon the builder, whoever the homeowner or builder is?
And I work close with nine-one-one as well, when they get you a new permit.
Or the mortgage company who's going to require that they have some kind of flood insurance.
Yeah, and this works for our existing homes as well, because loans sale and they get a mortgage on it, and a lot of times they're in a flood zone, you can't help it, they got to get flood insurance, and it's expensive.
What would have happened when the audit happened, when the audit took place several years ago, they came in, audited your procedures, I assume that it was satisfactory?
I was more, I had a lot, they said our records were better than most.
But so, so what if you had not, what if we had failed the audit, so to speak?
Well, you kind of lose your status in the flood manager.
So residents in our county would lose flood insurance, potentially?
Well, they could, they could, yes.
Potentially. So we don't, so that's the concern and why it's important for us to act on this, so.
But it happens, I mean, you get some homes, for every foot you're above the hundred-foot elevation, it drastically reduces your cost in flood insurance.
Okay.
But you have some that are built below, there's a lot of homes built below the flood insurance level.
The concept of permitting is not well received.
It's not.
Because that terminology was used several years ago, and there's just fear that there's going to be a mission creep and it becomes a revenue generator and on and on, so.
The only way I can do it is for our nine-one-one office, when they issue a new building address or new address for our homeowner, is we look and see where that thing falls in the area, then we flag it, call them, say, hey, you're in a flood zone. That's the only way I have to even do it. And I say, if the owner just already have an address and they're building on a lot they've had for years and built below the flood, I have no way of knowing.
Can you, can we change their procedure so that they don't issue an address without contacting you as one of their steps, and then you can, then communicate back through them when they give that address, they're saying you're in a flood zone?
I can, Stacy, yes.
Maybe we should work that, is that possible, you think, Michael? From the nine-one-one side?
I think so.
Okay. Anyway, so there's, there are several things to consider, I do think it's important for our community, our county.
But the only issue, and Morgan will probably touch on this, we have to adopt this by our next January meeting, and like I said, there's some language in there that really throws a lot of that stuff back on.
What do you have, Morgan?
So I think that, I think that at the end of the day, this commission will need to act and you will need to adopt a resolution. However, we have, and there is a time sensitivity, however, the model that has been shared with us, I do think creates some unintended consequences here in Covington County, and so I need the opportunity to work with Lynn to finesse some of those provisions so that it fits what we're able to do. But we are aware of the timeline, and I think that we can work together to get it to be what you need to adopt and to meet the notice requirements. I believe the public notice has to begin February 4th, maybe February 11th, but we can bring to you a draft in January for your approval.
Good deal. Commissioners, do you have any questions or thoughts that you want to put out at this time? If not, I encourage you to talk to Lynn and/or Morgan on questions that come up, things that are.
If we can just see it and, you know, have enough time to, if we make any changes or have any questions that can be put into it before.
So as you redline it, and then when we get it, we can go straight to that? Okay.
I was going to get my.
Okay. So that'll be on the agenda for the next, for the next meeting, which will be the first meeting of January, well after. And you said there's advertising, an advertising component or a notice component?
Yes, so once it's adopted at the local level, it is incorporated into the, I think it's, I'm going to have the terminology wrong, but basically the state's plan, which then elevates to FEMA, and I think there's a six-month, you know, notice and comment period for the public at large, so.
So they're responsible for that part of it, being there somewhere?
Correct, correct, correct. We just need, we need to have our portion done at the appropriate time to then fit into the larger schedule of notice.
And I'll say, the system is flawed, I will say, our permit maps, it's a shaded area, that's all I have to go by. And when you start looking at houses being in and out of the flood zone, you may have a, just for example, right here at Presswood Bridge down here, you may have a house at sixty, a hundred foot above the river, that's, you know, going well, it's not going to flood, but yet it's shaded, so I have to kind of show that, hey, you're in a, because they've got it shaded, you're in a flood zone. So the, it's not, it's not a perfect system, I hope it gets better, there's LiDAR data now out there that they can actually improve their, their models, I guess, on the floodplain better, if they would actually, if they would come up some better maps. I would even do it for them in our county, especially on Gant Lake, because I've got data to support on Gant Lake, but I've had residents over in O., south of O., right there in town limits that suffer because we don't have any flood data to support. So when I have to write a letter to them, I say, you're in a flood zone, I'm sorry, I can't tell you what that flood zone is, but you're in a flood zone, because FEMA tells me that it is. So that's, it's a flawed system, it is slightly, it is flawed, but it's better than, it's good to have flood insurance that, you know, that the government's got you back in case you do have a major flood event, but it is flawed.
All right, that item will be on the next agenda, anything else from you, Lynn, you want to report?
Just real quick, I'm just going to give this to Ms. Lynn, this is town of Horn Hills, that's their estimate for their flooding, their for that cost and like. I was going to go real quick, our ARPA projects, kind of give you guys an update on where you are money-wise for each of the things, I can start with District One. Let's see here, Mr. Northe, you have approximately, you've spent, we just finished up TT Clark Road, and to date, you've spent $231,813, so you've got roughly $18,000 left on your ARPA funds. That's true, Mr. Smith, we're, we have depleted your funds. We did, we did Wally Road, we did a patch, pretty much a patch of Avon Lot Road, we did W. Colvin Road up there at the lake. District Three, Ms. Holmes, we have done approximately $226,485 near District on, it was Glenn Chambers, Old Farm, and a portion of Candidate Eight Nine, and we spent $226,000, and you've got roughly $23,000 left. And of that $23,000, I was going to talk to you about yours, because I don't know how we're going to all spend this money, but $23,000 would actually probably do the Tetter Road that we had originally had on our rebuild plan, it would pay for the paving of that road. It's roughly a thousand feet, and I did an estimate cost yesterday, and that money, we could actually probably use that money to do it.
I really think this commissioner should just give me direct.
Again, I'll let you all discuss.
Well, anyway.
Well, I got a road, I don't want to pitch.
Because knowing that we have the most dirt roads anyway in that district, we need all the help we can get.
Now, as far, now as far as District Four, Mr. McGahay's district, we have spent $198,891, but we have, we've covered Brogdon, Wagon Wheel, Pruitt, Kirkpatrick, Tobacco, and Memory Lane, they're all short roads, and we'll expend all of his money after today.
What are the roads you got?
A bunch of short ones, they were all short, short roads. But now the chairman spent his, Chairman White spent his roads on the golf trail, he was given $200,000, which were, you were given a quarter of a million each, he has spent $105,000, so he has roughly $94,000 remaining in his funds, so.
Hey, can I borrow some more? I've run out.
I heard that.
Okay.
That's true.
But that's where we are on that. Other projects we're going with, like I said, we just got through the TT Clark Road on paving, we're doing Memory Lane today. I staked out 107 Wednesday of last week, I had a class on Thursday in Troy, I wasn't able to get it graded out, and was off the weekend, and yesterday was extremely busy, but tomorrow I will grade out 107, or at least probably get half of it done tomorrow, we'll blade it up, it's not off bad, I just got to get the final touches, it's been sitting for a while, I'm just going to double check the grades on it, and hopefully we'll have that paved before the year's end on the, on the main section.
Did the rain not mess it up very bad, it's pretty?
It's based, it's based, we're pretty good on it, so, but that's, well, we're getting very, very close, and I hope to have that one done before the end of the year.
Okay.
That big, that big section.
107 will be paved, the.
The interior section, yes.
Interiorization, it won't be finished out on each end.
Right, yes. But we'll have the big, the big section done, and I'll better get my shoulders, because it'll be a two-inch drop off, I had to go back and get that topsoil, we still have a big topsoil pile there, and I'll take that dirt to finish that out up there. We're in a process of doing our FEMA projects, our Hurricane Sally, we've got a lot of, I think two of our groups are getting close to being finished, so we generate a little more revenue, because they're large projects, we got to be completed with all of them in order to get our check for those, and we got a lot of money out, and I'm just Karen be glad to see when we do get some coming in. Our flap projects were, we've had our hydrology review about two or three weeks ago, I'm working on the survey of those, those projects. Our Christie Lane project with, right here in town in District Two, and Mr. Smith's district, they're close to the John Deere Place, they're at the cemetery, we're looking at, you know, paving that portion, it will be paid for, or at least the portion to their gate entrance by the developer. We're going to do the build and build the road, and we'll construct and do everything to it, they'll just reimburse us for the materials that we did on the job. So I'm in a process of trying to get that one surveyed, well, I haven't started that one yet, but I'm fixing to on that one as well. But George Lundie, Connect River Church Road and Hogfoot are our three flap bridges, and like I said, I'm working on the hydraulic reviews on those, as far as getting the hydraulic data to them on those bridges. They've already, we already got them sized, I just got to submit the actual data so they can go through Skour and everything on that, for that. And then our Horn Hill Bridge, that's on our rebuild money, and we've already getting ready, but we've actually met with the state on that one as well, while they're doing the hydraulic review, we're going to actually do a little bit of changing on it. We, I actually raised the bridge up a little bit to help on a vertical curve and on speed, but they agreed that we could probably just keep it down like it was, so it's going to be less impact on the site, it'll be a little bit quicker to build that project where I had it initially done. But we got that one going, and.
Cross Murray.
And Cross Murray, I'm still in the, I got the deeds this past week, or first of last week, from the surveyor for the last, the other two landowners, and I hope to get, I've been in discussion with one of the landowners, or both of them already, but I hope to get one of the smaller pieces done, hopefully next day or, next day or two on that one.
That's the one down at the entrance?
That's the very entrance, yeah. But, and the other one's, is in a trust, and it's more, it's a more legal thing, not just as far as getting the correct things, I'll get that to Morgan as well, we'll get ready to do that, but our local attorney's handling that here in town. So that's where we are.
What's the going rate to pave a mile of road right now?
About $180,000 a mile. And it's updated, it's about $108 a ton, and I don't have a calculator in front of me, I can tell you, I'm not offhand, but that's about what it's running right now.
Is it material only, or is that?
Material only, that's, that's, no, that's just laying, that's laying.
Probably four billion to.
That's just laying, that's $108 a ton.
Can I borrow your calculator? I'll give to you just two seconds. I can take what is a foot, and then you can go from there.
From start to finish, not just the asphalt? No, it's a guesstimate, but every road.
It's about $26 a foot, what it cost. Let me see right here.
It's either asphalt or chip seal, roughly?
$140,000, our current price is about $140,000 a mile.
Including dirt?
No, it's just strictly asphalt, strictly asphalt, about $140,000 a mile.
That's, is that asphalt or chip?
That's asphalt.
Chip.
Chips come in about, about 60, 70% less, or about 30% less than that, that cost, 30, 70%, I think, less than that cost.
Any other questions, Lynn? We have to get you to start making a slide to put up there so we can track, too much going on. All right. Thank you.
I have one question.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
On 107, I thought I was told the road would be three different.
No, just that middle section.
How much longer it took them to, that's going to be your other type?
We're going, I'm letting, I'm letting the 55 in the contract, there's just too much traffic and too much got to be done on the highway there for us to do that work, so I'm thinking we're going to let that contract, so we'll get it awarded on that portion, so it's going to speed up pretty quick.
What about tying into, into the old road on our end?
We're going to do that one ourself, it's just tying in there. We're going to do a little, some improvement, there's been concern about where it's coming out on the hill in front of the home, we're going to do some stuff to help minimize the, them stopping, I guess, there on that, on that end right there.
Okay.
But I've got to, I got to get, like I said, we got to get the shoulders right before, I didn't, I didn't want to, because I didn't want to get the ties done until we had that middle section absolutely completed, because if this gets opened, if, if it gets opened up, when they start cutting open these ends, they could really tear that road up and we'll be fighting it for a while, so I want to make sure we got everything good and established before I make the ties. Because we still got to do some shoulder work once they get the asphalt down and get that done. We got a good stand of grass, don't get me wrong, but we've got to come back though and flush out the shoulders and get a good stand there as well.
All right.
But just as soon as we get that done, we're going to let the other, the 55 contract, and then we'll make the tile on the, on the far end.
So you think it'll be open by the end of the next year?
Oh, it'll be by spring, I hope by, before spring of next year. Yes, ma'am.
How many years, Lynn?
It's three, we're on three and a half, it's four years now. Yeah, COVID hurt us bad and a lot, a lot of factors that factored into it, but.
That's since we started trying to acquire the land, right?
From the time the bridge was closed?
Yeah.
No, longer, longer than that.
It's been longer than that, yeah, we actually got, we secured funding.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, we secured the funding.
Four years.
Yeah.
We had a land transaction in the middle of that, and it just.
I knew that took a while.
It took a long time.
Artifacts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Lynn.
Yep.
Thank y'all.
Any other staff reports? Commissioners, what do you have?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah. We enjoyed the Christmas parades, didn't we, Tommy?
I've got to ask one thing.
Sure.
We discussed our, our budget about having the GPS on all the county equipment, I just had to get clarifications, y'all want every piece of my equipment correct, except for our basic, our pieces we don't use properly once every year, so which y'all, y'all agree to, y'all want them on every one of our, every one of our trucks, everything correct?
With the usual record basis?
Yeah. All right, as far as, I need to get a list, because I got the guy calling me, Mr. Dan's been giving me a buzz, I'm trying to get this thing done before sometime in January, but since I got all the department heads in here, we've got my engineering office, Kevin's maintenance, Tammy's cats, Chuck's mapping appraisal, the arena, I guess.
One arena, one in home services.
And home ser, home services, and then EMA, I believe that covers everybody, correct?
Do we get maintenance, do they say maintenance?
Yes. So if I can, I think, y'all may have sent me that before, y'all can, either drop an email with make, model, and serial number and mileage of the vehicles that are going to put on this. So, but if y'all discuss with other departments what you require from them, I know, I think Tammy or the guy something similar, if y'all require, y'all, y'all want to buy on this system?
Everything but the truck.
The original, the original vote of the commission was every vehicle was supposed to have GPS except for the Sheriff's Department, and that's what, the exemption was only to them. But since then, like I said, Tammy's got equipment that's changed it, but do y'all want it all on this one system, or are y'all wanting to?
I think it'd be simple on one system, just because it's something one thing, and not somebody got this, somebody has this, somebody has this. To me, I think it would just make it simpler for everyone to be on the same system.
So pretty much it stands then as your original order that all vehicles, with exception of Sheriff's Department?
The cats already has something right now that they're using?
We, we have a camera system that has, and also the new dispatch software that tracks, we just put our mouse where they were, shows and tells where our buses are, but I mean, I'm happy to go ahead and put these on too, to be a part of, you know, the community system.
But yours is, is basically new with the new software you got, right? So why, why spend the money on, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Everything under one umbrella, but...
Now, the only thing that covered the cats would be the camp truck. I would need that on every, all of us.
Yeah, exactly. Get that, but the buses, I mean, they're, they're covered with something new already. Be cheaper, save the money. Do we pay for that on your system?
I, because I have cats.
So, if you took out that, put on the other, then everything's still part of the same, basically.
But we, you, that's related to your dispatch. And I don't think we can, we can't abandon that one. You've gotta have that for the dispatch, so. We'll, maybe we can move forward with the understanding that they're all gonna be covered with a question on cats and let's see if, if we're getting what we want.
Still need the truck.
If we're getting what we want with what you have and make sure we're in agreement in it. And if not, then we can duplicate it. We can have this new system on that as well, so, okay.
Does the sheriff's department also include the jail vehicles?
It was...
He's excluded. Well, his are excluded. He has his own tracking or whatever.
I believe that it, that it was excluding that whole umbrella who, under the sheriff at the time they did that. I'd have to go back in full minutes, but I wanna think that they did exempt them all. I think there was some question before because you've got transport going on and you've got, um, you know, someone riding up down the road with inmates, that it would be nice, I think, at some point if you did have the ability to look and make sure everything's okay where they were. But I do believe they were excluded before.
I asked the question to our GPS, our new vendor, just doing, we're gonna be doing this. I asked him to just say how many sheriff's departments he had, that he had on record that he's doing GPS on. He gave me a big fat zebra for the whole state.